Start that again. I would like to call the Calwright College Board of Trustees meeting to order this March 26th at 10:28 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, Board Liaison at Calwright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs, which the link can be found on our website, calwright.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit to me. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q&amp;A feature on Zoom to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Teri. And if you could, please call the roll.
Love, adieu.
Present.
Heldegard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Adrian Brown.
Present.
Casey Chang.
Present.
Amy Costa. Ricardo De La Fuente. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Pam Haines.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis. Harry Legrand.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Here.
Bill Rawlings.
Here.
Mary Salas. Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Here.
Los Villa Lobos. And Joseph Williams. We have Coram President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Teri. Now we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Villa Lobos, will you lead us in the pledge, please? Thank you very much. Item 1.3 is the discussion on the order of the agenda. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about the way things are placed? All right, hearing none, we'll go straight into 1.4, which is the President's Report. I first just wanted to say that we're starting a little bit later today because we just came from our board study session, which was a student immersive experience. I just wanted to give another round of applause to the entire Calwright team, specifically Don Orth, Dr. McCarty, everyone, for such a wonderful study session. So, round of applause, please. I also want to thank Dr. Amber Garrison Duncan and our very own President Menon for having that conversation at the end of the study session. That was a wonderful way to conclude, a time when we could be intellectually curious. So, please give them a round of applause as well. And I'm not trying to duplicate whatever you have in your remarks, but I just wanted to say that Calwright seems to have this magic formula of both understanding both competency and connection. And it was great to see that in the 75-minute whirlwind tour that we all just underwent. So, thank you very much. We were so excited. That was so fun and enriching, and we hope to do it again, despite how much work that was. I look forward to doing that again. The remainder of my President's Report is basically to catch the board up from what happened at the last executive committee meeting. So, we just wanted to make sure there was that continuity, and please bear with me as I read through a few things. As it pertains to board approvals, the board approved a one-time lump sum payment of $10,000 to the Chief Product Officer as specified in the Executive Employment Agreement. The board also approved an amendment to Compete LLC, which is a marketing firm contract authorizing a new not-to-exceed amount of $532,000 for fiscal year '24 and '25. As it pertains to information and reports, Michael Younger, the Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation, and Bindo, our Director of Research, Data Strategy, and Effectiveness, provided a preview of labor market information to support Calwright's intention to develop the nonprofit and generative artificial intelligence career pathway programs. And Vivek Vias, our Chief Product Officer, if I could get that one out, provided an update on Calwright's new student portal. Don Orth, our Vice President of Student Services and Success, provided highlights of a digital literacy pilot between Calwright College and the International Society for Technology and Education Skillrise. And Amber Borth, our Controller and Executive Director of Finance, provided a second quarter fiscal year 2025 budget update. So, now that you all are caught up, I will pass it to President Menon for her remarks.
Thank you, President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the Calwright College Board of Trustees. I also want to begin by thanking the entire Calwright team for their remarkable efforts to really bring to life the student experience for our Board of Trustees during our study session. And again, also thank Dr. Amber Garrison Duncan, who is the Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer of the National Competency-Based Education Network, for her incredible leadership and also for really underscoring the importance of the CBE model and the value that it brings to Calwright students, but also learners across the country. I also wanted to recognize Trustees Escobar Correo and Trustee Nan Gomez Heitzberg for their service on their boards because their terms have come to an end. It has been tremendous to be the beneficiary on this board of their expertise and their leadership, and I'm very appreciative just of the input and guidance and support that they've given to our efforts along the ways. I'm going to keep my remarks briefish, as the Calwright team has a host of strong initiatives that are critical to Calwright's growth and our students' outcomes to present during today's meeting. You know, I just wanted to say, as we continue to see attacks on higher education across the country and quite a bit of uncertainty around the future of the Department of Education and what's going to happen to higher ed, I've been reminding folks that it's critical to really stay rooted in Calwright's purpose and mission. As California's first fully online, flexible, skills-based, public community college, our purpose was, we were created to support underserved learners and to bring folks off of the sidelines of our economy and prepare them for good and stable jobs. And that's about setting themselves up for success, but also setting up their families for success. Most importantly, our job was to build that opportunity around our learners' goals, their life experiences, and that's why we support them from all angles of their Calwright journey. We were asked to build that, and we have accomplished that. We continue to see the strong results of Calwright's model through the more than 1,200 certifications of completion that have been awarded, but most importantly, through success stories that we hear from students like Maurice. Now Maurice was a landscaper, and he turned into an IT support graduate who worked with career services to land a tech support role at a hospital. Now is our moment to expand the impact of what Maurice has tried to, has experienced with his engagement with Calwright. It's our moment to grow and to expand the impact of our work, and most importantly, to support and to advocate for our adult learners, to advance skills-based education, and to remind ourselves that we need to do this because it's rooted in driving economic mobility across the state and has benefit of that model translating its learning across the country. Today, you will hear from Vice President of Student Services and Success, Don Orth, about a strategic plan to enhance the student journey to ensure that it works even better for more students. Specifically, we are aiming to further personalize and SaaS scaffold the student experience to in turn focus in on reducing stopouts, accelerating completion, and contributing more to positive labor market outcomes. With a student body of more than 6,000 strong, and I just want to, yeah, I do want to pause on that, Member Haines, because many of you remember just a few short years ago, under 500 students engaging in the Calwright experience, and to grow this significantly, this rapidly, while meeting our purpose, our mission for the learners that we're here to serve, has been an incredible journey that I know most of you have provided, the leadership, the advocacy support, and the guidance around. That clear path forward isn't just about the learners in the programs that we're in, that 6,000 group of students, because our mission also transcends past that virtual classroom into career pathways and to model with precision how to do this well. So, that's why today you'll also hear from Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation, Michael Younger, about a strong opportunity to drive workforce outcomes for students even beyond what we've done before in our Community Health Worker Program. Calwright is leading the way in experiential learning by teaming up with SEIU UHW United Healthcare Workers to launch an earn and learn opportunity that'll open the doors for Calwright students to receive paid work experience while enrolled in our Community Health Worker Program. I want to specifically thank Hortensia Manderes, who leads this work for SEIU UHW as their Healthcare Opportunities Director. And I'll save the rest of the details for the other presenters to present, but I did want to take a moment to pause and reflect on this very strong trajectory that we're seeing and experiencing in today's meetings with our study session, but also illustrating what that means for Calwright and what that means for our students. We are at this really important inflection point in higher education, and I know it's palpable for all of us in this room, from rapidly changing workforce needs, the rise of skills-based hiring, increased demand in online flexible programs that have a through line to good jobs. Calwright is meeting so many of those needs, not for, just for our communities, which, if we were, we just wanted to highlight again, 56 out of 58 counties in California. We are also meeting this for the contribution that we need to make to California's economy. As I mentioned earlier, California is leading that way in driving career education, and the nation is following. Driving strong student success initiatives that help students persist and eventually achieve workforce outcomes is a key part of ensuring access and opportunities for working-age learners from all walks of life. I recently had the honor of hosting a fireside chat with Chancellor Christian for Calwright's annual virtual summit, and I asked Chancellor Christian about a steadfast mantra that I've often heard her say, which is, she says, you know, "California community colleges, our time is now." And how in higher education we carry that on in our daily work and amidst tough challenges that we're encountering and that lie ahead. The Chancellor also noted that as she was working on her Vision 2030, she was reading Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s letter from Birmingham Jail. And what he says is that waiting almost always means never, and that the call of "don't wait" was a theme that permeated her discussions amidst drafting the vision. She noted that every semester we wait, we miss a group of students who could have benefited from those changes, that we should have had in place to support them. And I just want to linger on that point for a moment, because we now serve over 6,000 students. We've awarded more than 1,200 certificates, and we've launched eight-based, skills-based programs and counting. And we continue to create workforce partnerships enhancing that student journey. That is the essence of year-over-year, six-month-over-six-month, month-over-month progress. That is what we all need to strive towards. And we will continue to expand that work by continuing to advocate for what our learners need and what our learners tell us they need. I'm also thrilled to share that all that hard work also has a new highlight to share. Next week, we will announce that Calwright has been named one of America's top online learning providers for 2025 by Newsweek, a recognition that reminds us of the value of what we do at Calwright and the value of a Calwright certificate. So, indeed, as the Chancellor says, Calwright's time is now. And I just wanted to conclude my remarks and thank President Aguinaldo and the board.
6,000.
Sorry.
6,000. That is wonderful news. Thank you, President Menon. That was the charge we needed today. That's certainly very exciting, and I have goosebumps from all of the good news. We are now moving to closed session. Item 2.1 in the closed session is the Public Employee Appointment, Government Code Section 54957 subdivision VB, Vice President of Research and Development. Is there any public comment on the closed session items? We expect to return from closed session in approximately 10 minutes.
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much. We'll see you on the other side. Righty. Great. Thank you very much, team, for coming back after closed session. There is nothing to report following our closed session. All right, we are moving swiftly to Section 3, which is our consent agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote? Hearing none, any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much, Teri. I will entertain a motion.
Move Consent.
Thank you, Member Haines.
Second.
I heard Member Villa Vicencio, or Trustee Villa Vicencio there. Teri, if we could entertain a roll.
Love, adieu.
Aye.
Heldegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Ricardo De La Fuente. Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Oh, Ricardo De La Fuente is on now.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Teri, and please let the record reflect that the trustee De La Fuente is with us at the meeting as well. All right, we are moving to Section 4, which is our action agenda. The first thing that we will tackle is item 4.1, approve the appointment of the Vice President of Research and Development. And for that, I'll turn it over to Joseph Bremgartner, our Vice President of Human Resources.
Good morning, President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the board. Today, we're seeking your approval to appoint Bindo to the position of Vice President of Research and Development. Ben went through an extensive application screening and interview process and has been chosen as the candidate that the Hiring Committee feels best meets the requirements of this position. The Vice President of Research and Development leads Calwright's Research and Development Department, bridging the college, the college's leadership in research and design innovation with new thinking approaches, models, methods, innovations, and innovative practices. The Research and Development Department is codified in the college's founding legislation and is a key component to the college's transformative, impact-driven model and strategy aimed at building a California in which everyone has access to skills, resources, credentials that they need to achieve economic mobility. In addition, this unit extends the college's research to the national higher education research advocacy, philanthropic, and thought leadership necessary to advance the college's mission and impact. And we're delighted to bring Ben forward today for your consideration.
Thank you very much. The Board of Trustees of Calwright College is happy to announce the selection of Bindo as the Vice President of Research and Development. The Board of Trustees will now vote on the appointment of Ms. Doe. Under California law, I'm obligated to orally announce all the monetary provisions of the appointment and their values. Once I announce the monetary provisions, we will have board discussion and public comment on this item. Then the Board of Trustees will vote on the appointment. The terms of the Vice President of Research and Development appointment include: appointment on an annual basis beginning April 1, 2025; annual salary of $203,416.02; leave rights consistent with other Calwright classified administrator employees; membership and CalPERS and related employer contribution as set by statute; and health benefits as currently provided to Calwright classified administrator employees. May have any trustee discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll take public comment.
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much, Teri. May have a motion, please.
Move Approval.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Chang and trustee Adu. Teri, please call roll.
Love, adieu.
Aye.
Heldegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Ricardo De La Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, and we are moving at lightning speed here. I love this. Before we present the next, oh, yes. Congratulations. Before we present the next agenda item, which is the 2025 California Community College Trustees Board Election, I want to point out that this item is strictly an approval to give the Executive Committee authority to select candidates for election to the Triple CT Board on behalf of the Calwright Board of Trustees. A discussion will take place during the Executive Committee meeting to be held on April 16th. So, now we'll move on to item 4.2, the 2025 California Community Colleges Trustees Board Election, and I'll pass it to President Menon.
Good morning, President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the Board of Trustees. The election of members to the California Community College Trustee Board takes place between March 10th through April 25th, 2025. The Calwright Board of Trustees can submit one ballot comprised of selected candidates to the California Community College Trustee Board on or before April 25th. Calwright must select its candidates at the next meeting of the Executive Committee, which is on April 16th, 2025. And with this board item, we are requesting the Board of Trustees approve authorization for the Executive Committee of the Board to select the candidates for whom the board will cast its votes. This concludes my request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any trustee discussion?
Just point of order. So, you said that you go to select it, and then it comes back to us, or you'll select, and then it just go forward? That part was a little confusing.
So, it's, the request is, sorry, it is delegating to the Executive Committee the, they have to do it at the April 16th meeting.
So, it's still coming back to the full board for approval? You guys are just selecting?
I don't think it can, because the deadline to cast the ballot is April 25th.
Okay. And then how do we give you feedback on who we believe should be nominated?
I will defer that question to the board leadership.
I feel like that might be a legal question. Pam, you're not Wanda, but you can answer.
Oh, no, I'm not Wanda. You want to answer it, Wanda?
I mean, I could just give the feedback now, because I'd like you to consider number 11, Udawak Nuk... Yeah.
Good morning. I believe this is a matter that's within the board's discretion based on past experience, how it's been handled in the past, but it's really the board's preference as to how they want to handle that, if they want to collect feedback now and take that into consideration when they're delegating the power, but it's really based on the board's preference. And I think it's helpful to hear from past leadership how it's handled in the past.
Okay. I think the question pending was specifically as to how we would collect feedback. So, let me hear trustee Haines's comment, and then we'll make that very clear as to how to submit comments. Trustee Haines.
Madam Chair, President, having served on the Triple CT and been tasked with providing background, would this be an opportunity to share sort of the makeup of that body with background information and demographic information for the entire board? And that's decision can then be, it doesn't have to be made here today, but at least the body would have that information?
I think that the discussion was going to happen at the Executive Committee, and that included what you were going to discuss. But if this board feels like we should hear a little bit of context behind this election, then I think we should, we should hear it now.
It would be helpful, because I didn't realize the 16th, because I can't be there on the 16th. So, if I could just give you background on the candidates, that might be helpful for the body to understand the dynamics.
Okay.
Okay.
Please. Yes. Yes. So, we'll take comments. I think the answer to trustee Williams's question is, please submit your feedback to me. Okay.
So, I can say something now?
You can say something.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So, the Triple CT Board is comprised of 21 members, and the board members are elected to a three-year term. They can serve an additional two, three-year terms, a total of nine. So, they come up for, they come up for four as a candidate after their three-year term, and then they can be voted in again. And they can come up once again and be a candidate for that last three-year term and be elected. So, what we have here are 16 candidates who are running for four seats. Okay, there are only four, four seats. Three of those seats are sort of incumbents, because three of those candidates have, are already on the board. Okay? There is one open seat. So, that's the total of four. The three candidates who are already serving on the board, their names are Jose Akala Riverside, from Riverside Community College District. This, the board voted for that individual for that three-year term. The next candidate is Inez Deluna from Napa Valley Community College. She was voted by this board three years ago. And then we have Tammy Silver from Pasadena Community College District. I believe this will be her third term if she is, if she is elected. There is one open seat. I can, I can share that from my vantage point, I have looked at all, I've read all of the candidates, all 16 of them. And if it were left up to me, I would, I would recommend Udawak Joe Entuk from Long Beach. I would encourage you to read that, read the candidate's statement. My recommendation isn't in stone. You get to do that yourselves, but by far, he is a very good candidate. Let me, let me tell you that our district, we all know, our, our community college, it's 116 colleges, 73 districts. So, and I've spoken to others, the demographic breakdown is important. 70% of our students are students of color, low income, marginalized in many cases. Our Board of Trustees do not reflect that demographic. But what I have tried to do, and I think many have tried to do, is to reflect the Board of Trustees, the Triple CT Board, with that demographic. So, we're looking for parity for women and men. We're looking for a cross-section, given that in many cases Latinos are underrepresented. We want to make certain that that voice is there. We look at small districts, single districts, and multi-districts. We don't want the power of a multi-district to be too powerful on the board. We also want to hear those voices from rural areas, urban, suburban. How many students are being served, whether it's far north, coastal, Central Valley? Central Valley is important to us. The inland valley is important to us, and we're looking, and we should be looking for racial and ethnic parity. We also look for how many public members, how many community members are on that board versus how many have come out of faculty or have come out of administrators, so that there's a balance of community and expertise in the educational fields. And so, that's, that's how some of these selections have been made, and I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Wanda, did you have a comment?
Yes, I was just going to encourage other board members to provide feedback based on the list of candidates, because it's helpful to have that conversation in its open forum so that the committee, if the delegation is approved, the committee can have that information, if it's on specific candidates or just the types of qualities or background that you'd like to see or would like the board, the executive committee to take into consideration in making their final selection.
Okay. So, we want to hear an open forum. Any questions or comments this body may have with respect to the trustee candidates? What about the actual recommendations? Do they have the opportunity to, between now and April 16th, which is the time of the Executive Committee meeting, to submit any additional comments, or should we limit it to here?
I recommend limiting it to this forum.
Okay.
To this meeting.
Trustee Williams, did you want to make some comments, then?
I mean, I support the comments made by Member Haines. You know, I participate actively in CCLC convenings and the trainings that they have. Also participate in ACCT. You know, I do think Udawak would be a good addition. He's active, he's engaged, he's engaged in the community, and it does add a different voice to the CCLC or the Triple CT Board, and just helping them build their capacity to offer more capacity building for trustees. We really need it at the local level, opportunities in the state to go to workshops and just get information. And so, and I encourage you all to just like participate in CCLC whenever you get a chance, and then ACCT, so you can see the difference between the two associations if you haven't. But, you know, those are the only comments that I have. And I support the, you know, the other incumbent members.
Thank you, trustee Williams. Trustee Adu.
Sorry. Udawak Joe is the one that you endorsed, correct?
Yes.
So, I read through all their bios, and he has stood out to me mostly because a lot of the things that he named as major issues and activities that we should focus on for the CCT, CCC T Board align with Vision 2030 and a lot of the things that we are going towards, in particular with his career field and energy. He's very, very focused on sustainability, and I think that's something that we are focusing on currently. So, that's something to keep in mind. Additionally, his focus on student housing... Additionally, his focus on student housing, basic needs and workforce development also align with a lot of our alignments. And he's also focused on nurture, on bachelor laureate degree programs and nursing. And so that's something just to keep in mind, that he does seem to have a lot of priorities that align with ours. And I thought that was great. And I, if I had to choose, it would be him.
I'd just add, we also try to look at years of service. He's been on that Board for seven years. He's also a Long Beach Community College District student, a former student.
Trustee Cheng.
Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't recommend Anne Kepner from West Valley Mission Community College District. When I was student trustee on the Board, and this is on a personal note and kind of professional too, she really helped me become student leader and really provided mentorship. I know she's a really active person in the South Bay community, which is where Mission College is. She is really active and really student-centered. And I consider her just a really great influence. And I definitely wouldn't be where I am today without her. So I know I'm just really appreciative. So I'd really recommend looking at her, Anne Kepner.
Thank you. Trustee Adu.
Apologies, I forgot to mention this earlier. Shin Lu, he participated in a program with, it was like a US-China program in terms of education. And I think as we've talked about focusing on having somewhat of an international perspective and having worldly partnerships, I think that's something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other trustee discussion on this? All right, let's take public commentary.
There is no public comment.
Thank you. So on the table is a motion to authorize the Executive Committee to select candidates for election to the CCT Board on behalf of the Calbright Board of Trustees. May I have a motion, please? Trustee Williams?
Second.
Trustee Adu? Terry may have the role.
Love Adu?
Aye.
Hildegard Agüinaldo?
Aye.
Adrian Brown?
Aye.
Casey Cheng?
Aye.
Ricardo De La Fuente?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Pam Haynes?
Aye.
Harry Legrand?
Aye.
Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio?
Aye.
Bloss Villa Lobos?
Aye.
Joseph Williams?
Aye.
Motion carries President Agüinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. We are moving now to item 4.3 to ratify Robert Half Inc. Temporary Staffing Agreement and Authorize Expenditures. I'll turn that one over to our Controller, Executive Director of Finance, Amber Borth.
Good morning, Board President Agüinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, Board of Trustees, Calbright President and CEO Menon, Staff and Community. I'm here to request the Board to ratify Robert Half Inc. Temporary Staffing Agreement and Expenditures from January through February 2025 and to authorize expenditures for this fiscal year in a not-to-exceed amount of $175,000. Excuse me. As shared in the agenda, at the time of the contract approval in May of 2024, staff anticipated the cumulative professional administrative temporary staffing expenditures to remain under Board ratification thresholds. Due to unanticipated vacancies in key administrative support positions, we now anticipate exceeding the $100,000 threshold and seek authorization for expenditures for this fiscal year in the not-to-exceed amount of $175,000. And we also seek ratification of expenditures incurred beyond the $100,000 threshold of just under $12,500 as seen in the agenda. Attachments to the agenda include the master agreement, the renewal agreement, as well as a Calbright College supplemental agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any trustee discussion? Hearing none, any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much. I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Haynes and trustee Adu. Terry, if we could have the role, please.
Love Adu?
Aye.
Hildegard Agüinaldo?
Aye.
Adrian Brown?
Aye.
Casey Cheng?
Aye.
Ricardo De La Fuente?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Pam Haynes?
Aye.
Harry Legrand?
Aye.
Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio?
Aye.
Bloss Villa Lobos? Joseph Williams?
Aye.
Motion carries President Agüinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. Next up on our to-do list is item 4.4, authorized signatures and Solano County Treasury signing authority. And that one, we'll go back to our Controller, Executive Director of Finance, Amber Borth.
Thank you again, Board President Agüinaldo and Vice President Rawlings and Board of Trustees. I'm here to request the Board to authorize our Chief Financial Officer, Edward Lee, as a signatory for Calbright's accounts with Solano County Treasury. Currently, the President and CEO Menon is the only signatory on Calbright's behalf. And now that we have hired our Chief Financial Officer, Lee, we are in need of authorization of the CIA FO to ask as a signatory on Calbright's accounts. Attachments to the agenda include a blank signature form that will be completed upon Board approval.
Thank you very much. Any trustee discussion? Trustee Adu.
Can I ask, you said it earlier, I just misheard. Who's the sole signatory currently? Oh. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, let's take public comment.
There is no public comment.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Say that one more time.
So moved.
Trustee Villa Vicencio? Trustee Adu? Terry, if we could have the role, please.
Love Adu?
Aye.
Hildegard Agüinaldo?
Aye.
Adrian Brown?
Aye.
Casey Cheng?
Aye.
Ricardo De La Fuente?
Aye.
Tom? Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Pam Haynes?
Aye.
Harry Legrand?
Aye.
Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio?
Aye.
Bloss Villa Lobos?
Aye.
Joseph Williams?
Aye.
Motion carries President Agüinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. We're moving to item 4.5, which is the partnership agreement framework between Calbright and SEIU H W to create the Community Healthcare Worker Earn and Learn Pilot Program. I'll pass it over to Michael Younger, our Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation.
Good morning. Good morning, President Agüinaldo, Vice President Rawlings and members of the Board of Trustees. Michael Younger, Calbright Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation. And I'm excited to be joined by the Service Employees International Union, United Healthcare West, Healthcare Opportunities Director, Orthencia Armentarez, as well as Allied Up Cooperative CEO, Melissa Els Barnicot. These are both prospective partners and they'll be joining us virtually and they will be offering remarks after my presentation. At Calbright, our workforce and economic development strategies focus on moving working-age adults from the sidelines into skills-based programs that are industry-validated and connected to strong labor market outcomes. Through collaborations, partnerships, innovative practices, we truly aim to enhance the economic well-being and elevate the quality of life for communities throughout California. Today, we are requesting your consideration and approval of a truly unprecedented healthcare union partnership and initial contribution that expands on Calbright's mission and impact by co-creating new and innovative direct connections for students to work-based learning experiences and employment. Next slide. On March 26, 2024, this Board approved Calbright's proposal to develop a community health worker program, which is slated to launch excitingly this fall. Research shows that from 2020 to 2024, there was a 25% increase in CHW jobs in California, far exceeding the rate of growth nationally for this occupation. This role is projected to grow by 10% over the next few years, with nearly 10,000 jobs posted currently in the last 12 months, I should say. The projected growth of CHW jobs over the next decade is significant, right? Not just because the data, of the data trends, but because it reflects a growing need for accessible, community-based healthcare solutions. Community health care workers bridge the gap between healthcare services and communities by providing culturally relevant health education, connecting individuals to medical and social resources, and advocating for improved access to care. They help to reduce barriers by building trust in offering basic healthcare services, and their work is especially vital in underserved communities, where they play a key role in addressing health disparities. Next slide. Calbright is proposing a groundbreaking partnership that introduces a unique workforce development model and integrates labor and education while ensuring students receive training that aligns with real-world industry needs and immediate job placement. In addition to Calbright as a workforce, training and skills development catalyst, the Community Healthcare Worker Earn and Learn Pilot Program will be powered by SEIU U H W, a significant healthcare union, plays a critical, critical role in advancing social justice by advocating for workers' rights, fair wages, better working conditions, and improved healthcare access. As part of this partnership, they will be responsible for participant recruitment and continual thought leadership. Allied Up Cooperative, a worker-owned employment company that connects healthcare professionals with job opportunities while fostering long-term economic security, will also be what fuels this partnership. As part of this partnership, they will be responsible for placement and employment coordination. The significance of this partnership should not be understated. And it's critical for at least five reasons. One, it builds and blends competency-based education with paid work experience. This pilot removes the education-to-employment barrier by integrating direct application of learning in work settings. Second, it creates direct job pathways for underserved communities, which we all here in this audience and supporters around the community college system really believe in. Third, it aligns with California's long-term workforce strategy. California's Jobs First Economic Blueprint prioritizes paid training programs that combine learning with real-world work experience. Governor Newsom's expansion of Medi-Cal coverage for CHW services in 2022 has really created a surge in demand for trained CHWs, making this partnership timely and essential. Fourth, prioritizes economic mobility and accessibility in healthcare careers. Many healthcare training programs require years of education and unpaid clinical hours, making them inaccessible to low-income and working learners. This earn-and-learn model ensures that students, many of whom face economic and employment barriers, can train for healthcare careers without the financial hardship. And lastly, develops a replicable model for future healthcare workforce development and will pioneer a transformational education-to-career pipeline. The pilot will initially support a cohort of 25 students, and the model is designed for scalability. A future expansion could extend to broader regional partnerships, partnerships with other healthcare-driven and workforce-focused entities, hospitals, clinics, public health organizations, and so on. Additional healthcare pathways can also be integrated into this model. And so we're really looking forward to this being a start to something very special. Next slide. Calbright's proposed $150,000 contribution for this pilot would be both a responsible and effective use of public education funds that are tied directly to employment outcomes. This contribution will be used to support planning, implementation, participant wages, and other critical pilot launch priorities. Additional funding will be jointly sought by these entities from public and private workforce and economic development entities and intermediaries to close funding gaps, potentially leveraging opportunities from the state's workforce development boards, High Road Training Partnership Grant Program, California Department of Healthcare Access and Information Grant Program, the California Healthcare Foundation, as well as the Jane Irvine Foundation, just to name just a few. And final slide. Our next steps are, after seeking and obtaining your support and approval today to move this partnership framework forward, will be to finalize the partnership agreement and begin the hard work of planning for this incredible pilot program. At this time, I would like to introduce Orthencia Armentarez, SEIU U H W Healthcare Opportunities Director, to offer a few remarks, followed by Melissa Els Barnicot, CEO of Allied Up Cooperative. At the conclusion of their remarks, I'll be happy to take your questions. Orthencia?
Yes, thank you, Michael. Good morning, Board of Trustees. I'm really excited to be here with all of you. We've been having conversations with Calbright. As Michael said, SEIU U H W is the largest healthcare workers' union in the West Coast. We represent over 110,000 members. And the work that I've been focusing on for the past five years is really, how do we begin to resolve this workforce shortage crisis that we are seeing? Our members see it every day. They see it in the clinics, they see it in the hospitals, and the importance of educating at scale and, and getting folks into the jobs is critical. And as we've been building pipelines and partnerships to get more healthcare workers into healthcare, we want to make sure that the jobs piece is actually part of the pipeline and the strategy. And this collaboration with Calbright is critical for us. It gives us an opportunity to really partner with a public online community college that's already thinking about this need with community healthcare workers. And when we heard about it, and we also see the need in our clinics, we thought that this was a no-brainer. It's a huge opportunity for our members and just in hearing the Board today and the things that you care about, our membership is reflective of California's population. We are predominantly women, people of color, and who better than people that look like us to be out in the community as healthcare workers, providing quality advocacy and care? We're also seeing in, in terms of the trends with community healthcare workers is that as community healthcare workers and their jobs have come from being promotoras to now professional, recognized workforce within the workplace, is that a lot of our clinic employers are also thinking about, how do we also expand their scope from not only the advocacy and the healthcare education, but also support with casework? And it's very important for, for me that a pathway that started rooted in the community, that started rooted with the promotoras de salud, that has now become the community healthcare worker, that we figure out the jobs. And so how is SEIU U H W going to leverage our relationships with our employers to get more community healthcare workers into jobs, right? And, and that's the piece that we're bringing here, is that we want to make sure that we're working hand-in-hand with Calbright as they're educating them, that we're recruiting the right people, and that we're finding jobs for people, and that they are good, quality jobs where people are going to have improved wages and improved quality of life. So thank you, Michael, for this opportunity to, to be here and speak with everyone, and we look forward to this partnership.
Thank you so much, Orthencia and Melissa. I invite you to share a few more remarks as well.
Michael, could we bring down the slides so that we can see their faces? Thank you.
Melissa, I think you're on mute.
I'm usually so noisy, so I was a little. Thank you. Thank you, Board of Trustees. Thank you, Michael. It's a pleasure to be here today. I'm Melissa Els Barnicot, and I'm the CEO of Allied Up Cooperative. We're a California employment social enterprise, as well as an alternative healthcare staffing company. We're a cooperative, we're a union employer, and we partner to healthcare facilities across the state, providing critical allied healthcare workers and talent. Our mission is to address the shortage of allied healthcare workers through placement for new grads into healthcare positions and upskilling experienced workers. To accomplish this, we meet each individual where they are in their career and life, coach to bring out their strengths, and seek placements and jobs that align to their needs. Our collaborative ecosystem uniquely addresses the last mile in workforce development through a model that addresses the, quote, "needs experience gap" for employers. Our model extends beyond the classroom learning and provides core skills training, coaching, and mentorship in the first crucial months on the job for new grads in their new career and throughout their career. Our organization has provided jobs, training, learning, and development opportunities for minority and majority female Californians from underserved communities to gain employment in the healthcare industry. This partnership will create both a learn and earn opportunity for grads and critically will bring fresh talent to a healthcare system that is drastically underserved and desperate for talent. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Orthencia and Melissa, for your thoughtful remarks and, and truly your commitment and positive impact on behalf of your organization that you've made. commitment and positive impact on behalf of your organization that you've made in this space. At this time, I'm happy to take your questions.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Haynes.
So, thank you. I'm really excited about this program. Excuse me, I do have a couple of questions. This is a pilot, so it's a small group of folks. Are these existing UAW workers that are going to be in it, or is this a new crop of employees that are... I'm trying to get an idea of who's going to be in it, and then ultimately who it's for, because wages is critical. So for the existing employee, they're at a particular wage. So I want to really have answered, is this a 20% increase in their salary? Is it 15? Is it more than that relative to their existing wages?
It's a great question, and so one of the things that I would say in kind of collaborating with our partners, it will be sourced within the existing population of SEIU UHW, but it's not exclusive. So as we collaborate, if in fact the 25 number is not fully met within that population, there will be an extension to satisfy that. We do feel like the 25-person number is a good tool to be able to both iterate, get perspective, and really understand the journey from end to end, and really be able to test the model to be able to handhold the individuals and participants into the workforce. And then on your topic around pay, so what we know is this type of experience typically starts within the $18 to $20 range per hour. This particular opportunity will be at $25 per hour over the 12-week journey. These participants will be eligible for up to $12,000 over the journey of their experience, and so it's competitive for a reason, right? We want to make sure that folks experience a equitable pay for their contributions, but also preparing them for that employment and career ladder conversation.
Trustee Do.
Hi, thank you all for your comments. I wanted to ask, in terms of actual operations and how students will move through the program, as Calbright is, you know, fully remote, will this pair students to local, like, organizations within their area, or will it be a specific headquarters, something like that?
It's a great question, and so part of the reason we are working with statewide entities is to eliminate the barrier of not being able to place and find employment for these individuals. And so we're very fortunate, SEIU UHW's very lengthy kind of collaborator network in the healthcare industry, in addition to Allied Up Cooperative's existing relationships with employers. Our hope at Calbright is always to strengthen community. So to the extent that there are opportunities that are very much in the area in which our students reside, we want to strengthen community. We really believe in the economic development and the workforce opportunity that this presents.
Did you have more questions? Okay, go for it, and then trustee Epstein is after you.
Okay. I just wanted to ask within that, with outreach, are you planning to specifically target people from more rural communities, people that otherwise wouldn't have these sort of internship opportunities, or is it just going to be more general?
No, it's actually a good point, and so part of our strategy too, in terms of partner engagement, is a commitment to ensuring that they address target communities that we have cared about since Calbright's inception, which includes rural communities, underserved communities, under-resourced communities as well. And so we expect that the population will be representative of what was mentioned from our collaborators, but also very much in line with our mission. Thank you.
I'll just add one thing, which is I think when entering partnerships in general, one thing that's particularly important to us is we look for the values alignment, and we look for the directional connection and sort of like similar worldview of what we're trying to accomplish together. And I will say, both Allied Up and our partnership with UHW is really in line with that, really purposeful and intentional in that way.
Hi, so I was just wondering if you could, if one of you, the three of you, can explain just a typical student, how you identify the worker, and where are they working when they start, and then what happens to them once they enter this program? Just kind of walk through the steps of how it affects an individual?
Yeah, I'll invite maybe Orthencia just to speak to the identification.
Yes, yes, and thank you for these questions. They're so wonderful. We have an executive board of almost 290 board members in our union across the state, both in metro and urban, metro and rural areas. And in addition to that, we have a leadership structure of education ambassadors, and these education ambassadors are rank-and-file union leaders that work in clinics and hospitals all across the state, where they are trained on recruitment. And so we will be, we have a program where we recruit not just from our membership, but friends and family of SEIU UHW members, and also the communities where they live. And so our expansion and our access really gives us an opportunity to work in the communities that need it the most. We want to be very thoughtful about where the recruitment happens, and we want it to be connected to where the jobs are. And so if we want to recruit someone that is going to go into a community healthcare worker, can we already start having conversations with employers, which I've already started having these conversations, and figuring out where are the employers that need community healthcare workers that are willing to not only be part of the Earn and Learn pilot, but also hire them permanently? Because we need to make sure that the graduates work in permanent jobs, and that we're not only supporting the worker and the worker being able to pass probation, but that we're also supporting employers and increasing their retention. And so the conversation really is, where is the need for community healthcare workers, and what are the communities that those employers exist in, and how are they overlaid with our rank-and-file union membership? I hope that helped explain a little bit of how we do it.
And so the employers could be a public agency or a private hospital? Is that correct? Sorry.
Yeah, so it could be an FQHC, it could be a nonprofit hospital or clinic system. And, you know, just to give you an idea, in Kaiser Permanente, we have healthcare educators, and in our clinics like Lifelong Community Clinic, we have community healthcare workers. And so that's just an example of the environment where they can exist. And the thing about community, about all classifications, we call them career pathways, but in the workplace, we call them classifications, is that, you know, the classification might have a different name, but when you look at the job description, it is the direct overlay of what the pathway is. And so they're called different depending on if it's an acute care center, or if it's a skilled nursing facility, or if it's an FQHC. But we are looking at where do those jobs exist, and what are the employers that need them and that are willing to hire them on a long-term basis, permanent basis?
Excuse me, where it really makes sense in terms of the skills-first approach is beyond the job description, what are the skills that are being obtained to satisfy, right, the job requirement, which is really important, is what we've shared and have spoken about with this board quite often, this focus on the skills overlay across jobs.
Great. Trustee Villa Vicencio, then trustee Perry.
Thank you so much. VP Younger and everyone else, great presentation. This actually reminds me a little bit of the nursing demonstration that we passed with the Board of Governors, the HOPE program, which is interestingly was led by my district's San Joaquin Delta College, because that was a partnership of, I believe, I have it up here, like, dignity health, Adventist Health, community medical centers, and San Joaquin General Hospital. I just feel like there's something very similar to this partnership. I'm grateful, sort of, this cross-sectoral partnerships that we're doing. Obviously, we need to tackle this from so many different levels, and I'm seeing, I love seeing the coordination. And so I know, as mentioned, this is a pilot, and so maybe this is a question sort of beyond, obviously, the pilot here, but I want to know a little bit about, so your metrics of success. So what do you expect this pilot to accomplish? And maybe in the future, maybe you can speak to how you'll be able to, if successful, how you will scale this program for Calbright to serve, obviously, the needs of our students. Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate this question, and you're absolutely right. There are examples by which others have pursued, right, this huge gap in the healthcare industry. So I appreciate your comments. Scalability is kind of central to this partnership. When we talk about the first 25, it's really taken into accounting in terms of success metrics relating to both employer feedback and experience, right? Candidates that are coming to them with expertise that Calbright has provided through our competency-based education, but also the opportunity to prepare them for the specific job where our partners come in as well. This is going to be really important, so both their satisfaction, the employer satisfaction, we also want to talk through the skills that would gain them opportunities for growth and compensation. What has that experience been like, and what is that pre-imposed, right? We want to capture that as well. We also want to better understand where there continues to be demand for these workers, and also vet and validate the experience of the handoff to the employer, which is going to be very important as well. When we talk about scaling beyond the first 25, it continues to be critically important to support both the instructional delivery, where our colleague, Dr. Shannon McCarty, is very focused on and launching this fall the CHW career pathway, but also when we talk about supporting the career journey of the student and working hand-in-hand with our Vice President of Career Services and Supports to apply everything they need to be successful in their careers. And I think finally, right, making sure that, you know, the employers more broadly remain committed, right, to these healthcare opportunities, the training and development of the candidates, and staying in communication with them throughout their journey, and that in the event Calbright can continue to be of assistance and follow their journey throughout their career path, that begins to be important data and experience qualitative that we would really want to know.
I want to add one more thing, which is we often talk about pilot-to-scale as a trajectory that involves a single program. So I remember this a lot, like, the program that's most highlighted in community colleges is the CUNY ASAP program. And there have been great efforts to understand some multi-dimensional program, many different supports, many different pieces of the structure, but it is difficult to instrument to pinpoint what aspects of the experience are the most impactful. And in that way, that's how we do pilots. We start to identify what's most significant that works in the experience, what does the experience need to entail. And so the purposeful intention to look at what Orthencia described as the work experience gap that often is a barrier to hire, that's an important isolating condition. And I highlight that as an example, because I think the value of doing this in this way by instrumenting a pilot like this in the context of what we're capable of doing and contributing to the broader set of efficacy questions around how to do this education while centers around our ability to isolate those conditions. So I've often been communicating about this as like the sum of the parts are greater than the whole, and I think this is particularly in a case where we want to understand what aspects of the work experience are really important and essential, what aspects of that, what does that actually translate to in terms of workplace success? And so partnering with an Allied Up allows us to sort of see that beyond even the initial placement in the first early days of an individual's journey in that new job role. So several things here that will be instrumented technically across the pilot to be able to determine not just learnings for how this program itself grows and its structure and entity, but what learnings can others take away from this as they're building out new ways of delivery approaches that are getting closer to the goals that we've set for the project, right? The three partners have identified the most important parts being finding, identifying, and serving in community. And in doing so, how do we generalize the effects and the results of that in ways that will have meaningful, involve a meaningful strengthening of this work across the board?
If I may ask just a quick follow-up question, this may be beyond the scope of this project, but are these type of partnerships being used as a model for other programs that you may are considering scaling up? I just want to hear about that before we move forward. And I really appreciate the industry alignment to the program, the partnerships.
Yeah, absolutely. And so this is actually a model that we've continued to invest in as it relates to partnerships from bringing in industry to both serve on our advisory committees, to both influence our curriculum design, to co-create, but also working with intermediaries that help get us even closer to our mission and goals. And so collaborating across different entity structures are something that we're really focused on and really want to do even more as we move forward. So you'll see models like this, and we've seen examples of these type of models that exist, for example, bringing in private entities and others as a part of our California Workforce Accelerator program pathways, which I'm excited that the team will be bringing before this board in the very near future. But these type of collaborations are what we've zeroed in on, are so critical to produce the results that we are very really excited about for this student population.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Perry.
I think this is so smart, and it really is a high mark in noting where Calbright's come from. Now, we're not talking about numbers. We're talking about targeted partnerships, and we are actively recruiting in a very specific framework that, to your point, builds a community. So I really applaud this, and you can see where this could lead to so many other partnerships, and both, Calbright will benefit from what you know, labor union new partners are coming in, and I think we're now looking for students who we know sort of have a foot up, and we can give them a leg up. And I think that will improve their journey and our success rate. So this is pretty fabulous.
Thank you so much.
Another hashtag for us, pretty fabulous. Any other trustee discussion? Right, hearing none, let's take public comment.
There is no public comment.
Thank you all, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Thank you, trustee Haynes. I heard, was it Adu? Adu is on the ball here. She's seconded everything today. Roll call, please, Terry.
Love Adu.
Aye.
Heldegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Ricardo De La Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Absolutely.
Jennifer Perry.
Fabulous. I mean, yes, aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Enthusiastic, aye.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams. Motion carries President Agüinaldo, and I'd like to do a time check. We have 16 minutes for the next two presentations.
Yes, thank you very much for that. Thank you, Michael and Orthencia and Melissa. We can't wait to ask you more questions about how the pilot went. All right, you heard, Terry. We have 16 minutes left, everyone. Let's move to item 5.1, Student Journey. I'll pass that one off to Don Orth, our Vice President of Student Services and Success.
Good morning, President Agüinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the board. I'm Don Orth, VP of Student Services and Success, and I'm joined by my colleagues, Vivek Baez and Dr. Shannon McCarty. Today, we're here to give you a sneak peek at the next iteration of our Student Journey, which we refer to as Student Journey 2.0. Am I probably not? How about that? There we go. When we do anything at Calbright, we always start with our mission, why we're here and doing what we do. Ultimately, Calbright is about reducing equity gaps and increasing economic mobility, of course. Click. While there's no silver bullet to accomplish this work, we're deeply committed to serving our students well. We've been committed to also continuous improvement since day one. We evolve, improve, and adapt to keep pace with and even get ahead of the world we're empowering our students to thrive in. This year, we're focused on a few important goals: reducing stopouts, increasing completion, and increasing positive labor market outcomes. These should look pretty familiar to you. These should look pretty familiar to you. As we talked about in this morning's study session, the following strategic pillars drive development of the opportunities we offer. First, we create a sense of belonging through relationships and community. Second, we scaffold every student's journey based on needs and goals. Third, we prepare students for career with skills, knowledge, and experiences. And we ensure operational efficiency to enable high-quality development at scale. You can connect most of our initiatives and development of student support with one or all of these pillars. So why are we talking about this updated model of the student journey now? And what I can say is, you know, we have really reached a level of maturity, stability, and infrastructure and cross-functional capacity that really positions us to build towards more significant milestones. Instead of working on many things to improve all areas incrementally, we can focus and prioritize together on a single idea, a milestone that represents the next phase of the student journey, Journey 2.0. So let's just quickly, quickly, go through the current journey. And it'll hopefully be a little familiar to you and you experienced some of it today. The student lands on our website, then applies through the CCC system. Next, they get an email from us to sign up for onboarding, a synchronous experience that welcomes every student to Calbright. They request special services and technology as they complete their enrollment agreement. After that, they have access to their program of study. Kickoff, another synchronous component of orientation is optional and is led by an instructor that gives a little more detail about the program itself. For the majority of the time our students are with us, they are in their program pathways, you can see in that big, long bar there. They have access to many supports, including instructors, tutors, counselors, wellness services, student life events, career services, and more. They just need to decide which are most useful for them. Finally, they complete, they take an industry cert, ones associated with their program, and enter alumni status during which they participate in events or access resources, including job opportunities that we share. Here's the good news. Many of the initiatives that have driven our arrival to this moment are working. And Vivek and Shannon are here to talk about a few.
Good morning, President Agüinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, members of the Board of Trustees. In the interest of time, I'm going to keep my comments brief. And I, most of you have seen a lot of the salient features of the current journey and immersive demonstration this morning. But it's, I just want to say it's a significant leap forward in terms of the student journey from where we were just a year ago. Some of the salient features, which you saw, include a welcoming first-time walkthrough to orient our students from the start, an intuitive progress dashboard for real-time visibility and learning milestones. Students can also submit documents for program prerequisites, schedule meetings with instructors and counselors, and access one-click support through multiple channels. And the portal's responsive design ensures an omni-channel experience accessible from desktop and mobile devices. What I want to highlight is that behind the front-end experience is a robust technology foundation that we're building. And it's a connected data infrastructure that integrates Canvas LMS, Student Information System, and several third-party tools that support automation and timely updates. In addition, we have enhanced IT services to better support our student access. With the implementation of the Tango platform, we have streamlined and automated processes for device ordering, inventory management, and shipping, helping us more effectively manage fulfillment. So together, all of these developments are powering an engaging digital learning experience, which is our current journey, while setting the stage for building a more transformative and elevated Journey 2.0.
All right, I'm just going to highlight a few of the pieces that are part of our program pathway that you all had an opportunity to experience earlier. But one of the things that we're very proud of is that assessment-forward approach. And as many of you saw earlier during the journey, if you didn't make that 80% yet, you were redirected then to do some formatives and practice and learn from your content. But again, it's about the yet and getting you to master. So really appreciate that we are able to give our students that opportunity and then to assess their knowledge and skills and then move them on their path. The other piece is the work-based projects. So not simulations, but real-world projects where they're engaging with employers and getting industry feedback. And then the last piece that we've been integrating across is the durable skills. Because we know how important it is, not just for individuals to get technical skills, but really to understand how they can thrive in their career and on the job.
Great, thank you, thank you. We're going to move on to take a peek at the new journey we're designing now. So Student 2.0 is first focused on reducing stopouts by understanding students' needs and building experiences and supports that are more personalized. This new journey also sets clear expectations for students about what they're signing up for. And that starts with the program they choose. So we can have a click here. And again, this is the model of Student Journey 2.0. The first is, whoa, we're going fast. Okay, Program Navigator is the first experience. And I'm going to try to do this briefly but clearly. Imagine landing on the website and getting kind of a pop-up that says, hey, it looks like you're interested in a Calbright program, to answer a few questions to help us kind of match the best program for you and giving some suggestions about the best match program. They'll go through CCC Apply as usual. But then, instead of onboarding, which they currently go to, they'll do an intake assessment. And that's a series of questions to really understand their skills, their needs, and their goals so that we can start understanding, like, how do we support them best in a personal way? So from that intake assessment, three things are generated. First, a student journey. And that journey kind of says, this is based on your answers. This is what we see kind of the best path forward for you. Second is a scaffolding, kind of a, sorry, second is the orientation, a personalized orientation, which basically says, here are the kind of things that, based on your needs and interests, that are best, will best prepare you for the next thing. And the last is this scaffolding for their pathway. And basically, a set of touchpoints, like meeting with a counselor or career services or tutoring, again, based on needs and goals so that we have the right kind of structured scaffolding for them, which is kind of a lesson learned from those pace and progress timelines that you've heard a ton about, this flexible structure. And so we feel like this structured scaffolding, based on what we hear they need, is a really important step forward. Okay, next, what do we have? Great. And the final piece after orientation, and what we're realizing is, you know, students don't always know what to expect. So this more robust orientation gives them a chance to assess, is this the right thing for me now? And if it is, great, now we sign the enrollment agreement. The next step is the pathway, and that's there. And now here, like I mentioned, more kind of structured scaffolding that combines, that's integrated into program, that Shannon's going to talk about, but things that are really designed to personalize their own journey based on what they say they need, not just a general kind of scaffolding that we push on everyone. And of course, kind of they complete, we're looking at a distinct off-boarding experience that sets them up for the next thing, right? How they're supported by Calbright, how they can engage in alumnus, career opportunities potentially, four-year degree pathways, also kind of certification when that's related to their program, but really setting them up for the next stage of their journey. And you'll see those, Teri, you can just click through and get to the end there. And I'll just let you click, 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 click. And we'll do one more click. There we go. And right there is good. And just to give a little more kind of detail here, let, again, Vivek and Shannon kind of talk a little bit about kind of what's happening specifically.
So as we bring this Student Journey 2.0 blueprint to life, we're embedding some essential technology enablers at every stage of the experience. And so it's helpful to view these efforts through three core lenses. Application, Development, and Integration, modern data infrastructure, and intelligent automation. So in application, development, and integration, some of the key additions to Journey 2.0, over and above what you saw today, are intake assessment to identify support need levels for personalized learning pathways, a dynamic journey map to provide real-time visibility into progress, and customized and asynchronous onboarding to offer greater flexibility. We're adding mechanisms also for credit for prior learning intake and award, improving our transcript management, and deeper integrations with Canvas and the Student Information System. And in strengthening our data systems, the second lens, we're consolidating our learning and engagement data across all platforms. And so that, with that, we're establishing the groundwork for automated triggers that will drive outreach, academic planning, and just-in-time interventions. In parallel, we're developing Tableau-based analytics to inform staff decision-making. And we're advancing data governance for data quality, privacy, and ethical use. And so we will build on that framework, taking a use-case-based approach for AI, starting with a prototype of an after-hour support chatbot, and explore predictive analytics to proactively identify students who may benefit from additional support. And finally, to enhance operational efficiencies and prepare Calbright for scalable growth, we're investing in automation across critical workflows. These tools include streamlining milestone and timeline management, automated check-ins for, automated check-in scheduling, simplifying enrollment workflows, and enabling device request tracking. These automations will reduce repetitive tasks for instructional and support staff, boost responsiveness, and elevate service levels across Student Journey 2.0. Over to you, Shannon.
Thank you. All right, and to add to that, because we are very excited to have all this data-rich behind the system, we're really thinking about how can we even do more deeper integration of support services? And I think you saw today that we have really rich individuals that are providing context for students and engaging them and keeping them on track. But there are other ways that we are planning to do deeper integration within the program pathway. So we really want to think about, if you're a third of the way in your program, and that can look very different for every student, how do we nudge them or direct them to start meeting with the career services? Or start thinking about the next job that they're applying for? And how do we start building that mindset of like, what are the skills that I'm going to need and be able to speak to when I actually get to that job opportunity or that interview? And so we're going to build some nudges within the program pathway. And then one of the other things that we're very excited about is thinking about the data behind the scenes. And then how do we also create opportunities for leveraging AI tutors? While our instructors are very responsive, as you saw today, we don't expect them to work 24/7. And so we need to be able to provide students with services and also some tutoring and support so when they have questions. We know that our students are not just learning between eight and five. They're actually doing it weekends and evenings. And so we want to be able to make sure that they have those opportunities as well.
Okay, great. In the, just in the interest of time, but happy to take any questions or comments really quickly, if folks have them.
Any questions from the team? Member Chang.
Really quick, thank you so much for showing this. Really enjoyed our earlier session. My question was from the earlier session too. What is the turnaround rate for assignments that can't be auto-graded through Canvas? Yeah.
Sure, the goal is 24 hours, up to 48 on weekends. But we do try to make it 24 hours.
Great question, thank you.
Trustee Brown.
How many students get stuck between your initial website form and then CCC Apply step before getting to the next step? And what do you all do about that, if it happens?
That is a great question. We're looking at the numbers now. So I don't have an exact answer. But we are really looking to kind of reduce the friction in that space. How do we set them up so they're making good choices and they're getting through the CCC Apply, the application, which is tricky? And we lose some students there, for sure.
I just want to be clear. We've done a fair amount of historical study on this as well. So we have kind of prior year data and exploration of exactly who gets stuck and how. And we shared that out, but we'll maybe recirculate that information and content so we can get the most current numbers. But we know historically, it's been a problem, and it's been a problem system-wide and for this population of learners specifically. We do a very high level of tactical support through the CCC Apply process today. But there has to be a better and more efficient way to do it. We've also worked with institutions who've reached out to us on the enrollment side of the funnel to sort of coach them through some of the ways in which we try to get ahead of that by identifying learners before they're ported out to the CCC Apply site, et cetera. But I will say, there is much more we can do efficiently to accelerate it. And even with some minor changes to how CCC Apply is currently structured on the back end of things, that will help not just adult learners at Calbright, but adult learners system-wide. So we will continue to share our tactical experience with that as well as our efforts to make that more streamlined because we think it's a learning that's essential across the system.
That's an important question to ask because of how fresh it was from yesterday's Board of Governors discussion. So really glad you asked that question. I'm going to take, trustee Villa.
Go ahead. Two things that I think are going to be super important and beneficial to have full transparency around as we move into a space where CCC Apply is being redesigned. One is usability testing is not the same as user design and testing. So I want to be very clear about what's needed there. We have extensive experience on this, would stand ready to support efforts that make it easier for, especially this learner population, to do that. So I, those are important questions to ask and have transparent along the way. And the second is how the data at the backend is structured, the interface that it has with institutions, and the ease with which any system that any institution uses should be able to interact with the application system. These are absolutely solvable challenges and requires, and I would, this is one area where I would speak on behalf of all my other CEO colleagues in the system. I rarely ever would do that, but I would do it on this because this can be done even with small tweaks in, to affect, you know, more, the current system as the other thing is being rebuilt or whatever. So I just could not keep quiet about that.
What is your collaboration with the Chancellor's Office on this already?
I would say like ongoing. We share a lot of what we're experiencing and learning. And Vivek, maybe you can speak to some more of the specific engagement. And I think it's you engaging to learn more about the application process. A lot more to offer there and sort of happy to, happy to help.
Yep. I mean, it's no surprise that the drop in number of applications, et cetera, once with that fragmented experience is way more than we'd like it to be. And so we've been talking with the CCC Tech Center to get support and advice on the development that is being done to make it better. So there's been ongoing conversations on how we can potentially have some kind of an interface through which we could exchange data so that we can manage the student experience better so that it does not become a fragmented user experience between the time that they come to the college site and then they have to go to CCC Apply. Because that can impact motivation for a lot of applicants and then also the redundant data perhaps, or repeated attempts at putting data and can be a big detriment to the motivation. So we're talking with CCC Tech to see how those interfaces are being developed so we can make better use of those. And just like Adita said, in the meantime, we're doing the best that we can do in terms of the, how we manage that experience from our end, given the current challenges of integration with CCC Apply. But we are pulling data also. We've already developed some connectivity and some integration in terms of just the raw data that we pull from the CCC Apply systems. So we can utilize that to enable our student journey. So those are some of the ongoing efforts and conversations that we have with CCC Apply.
I think it's up to us to continue pushing this with the Chancellor's Office because if the CCC Apply interface was just as effective as this morning's student immersive experience, I think it would have solved a lot of the world's problems. So we'll keep that on deck for continued discussion. We have member Villa Vicencio, you just went. Member Haynes, member me, and then member de la Fuente.
I'm going to try to be as quick as possible. I really appreciated this morning's study session and seeing all the touchpoints that are being there. We just talked about onboarding. I have a quick question about, so the classes that are offered first. And so we're talking about the student journey. So I'm just curious, when we were answering the question of like, okay, how many hours do you have for your, for your week, right, to do your classes? And maybe I just need to know this. I don't know how Calbright operates, so please enlighten me. So do you operate within sort of your traditional quarter or semester system where you actually have classes that are like semester-based? Or do you have specific one tailored for students that actually meet these needs where you have late start classes? I don't know what it may look like from Calbright. But I just want to hear about that model real quick from you folks and sort of the retention and persistence that you see from, from students. Thank you.
Sure, I'm happy to speak to that, but Dawn can also jump in. One of the things we do is we have weekly starts, and that actually starts the clock for students. And so from an instructor standpoint, you will have students added to your section at any point in time, and then you are beginning that support process for that student. And so students then can indicate how many hours that they are able to support the, working towards that program. And so we're very flexible. There are no due dates associated with the course, although that we have a team that is nudging, following up, looking at how often the, excuse me, the students are logging in, reaching out to students if they haven't logged in within seven days, 14 days, 30 days. And so we make sure that we keep them on a track, but it's a track that they have chosen. So there's no given calendar and/or, I would say, a traditional term. We do restart terms every six months. So we're making sure that students are participating and engaging within that, within that six-month time period.
Yeah, I can just add, there are, so there are no synchronous classes either, right? So students aren't sitting down with an instructor to learn the material, although there are drop-in support hours, right, by instructors and by tutors. So they are completely, they can go through the course material as often or as frequently as they want to.
I really appreciate that clarification because obviously, not, we're learning about the model and again, the student journey. So I appreciate the flexibility and enlightening me about how that process works. Thank you.
I'll just add one more thing, which is I actually
I'll just add one more thing, which is, I actually love how our faculty do the, demonstrate the, the way in which that interaction occurs for the students, you need to, in meaningful ways, because they don't do it in a siloed corner. The, the work that happens collaboratively between the instructional faculty and student support specialists and counselors across both Shannon and Don's division is, is probably a really important part of the secret sauce, because they can observe and see which students are struggling, and they can target the right type of support and outreach and engagement to, to the learners based on what that need is.
Yeah, I can, and just add a little more light on to kind of that specific process. You know, every week, a cross-functional team of support and instructors meet together to look at kind of the range of students and how they're doing. So we'll look at, hey, these students are doing well and almost done, should we nudge them? These students are falling behind, and really kind of create a strategy for outreach based on actual students, really looking at them carefully, cross-functionally, because there's really a support role for every kind of person at the college.
Again, thank you for all the touchpoints. That's so important, especially for the unique student population that you serve.
Trustee Haynes.
So thank you. I want to go back to CCC Apply, because it is the front door. And, and so, and there's a, and I believe that there's a difference between engagement, collaboration, partnership, and who the user should be in the, in this process. Now, yesterday, we were told that this is a clean slate, we're starting from the beginning, because I had questions about that. And so I would, I would just say to CalBright, to be, actually, to be aggressive relative to what is needed, because what is needed at CalBright is actually what the system needs. And so, and I don't know how hard that is to be pushy. Yeah, I do know. But it is so critically important today, because these interfaces make a difference in everyone's success relative to the product and relative to the outcomes. So that's, that's my five cents of it.
I'm not in the habit of open brainstorming, but I'm gonna, you guys are probably going to kill me when I do this, but, you know, I think like, it's also a little bit about what we do best. So a lot of the work that happens is, you know, maybe it's folks who are the technology leaders from each of their campuses that kind of participate and provide feedback into the process for what happens with CCC Apply. And I think you need, what we've learned, right, like even in the way that we've delivered an identification of students who need support and how we need to adjust and bend and augment across the teams to be able to provide that support, that we sort of have to also introduce information and data points beyond the structures that we've traditionally relied upon to arrive at things. This is particularly true in, in technical delivery. So my, my open brainstorm on this is, I think we can offer what our visibility and understanding is about the challenges and barriers and opportunities to address them, but like, the most important conversation would be probably convening other leaders in the system, but in this cross-sectional way. So it's not just the folks in, you know, Vivek and Brendan's shop on the technology side that are having to navigate all of this, but it is a combination of folks on the enrollment services side, folks on the support side. Like, I just think you need a little bit of that, and I don't think that's a, I think that maybe that's a design session, right? Like, I think the way that we approach, the way that we decide what to do, has a lot to do with convening folks who hold a little bit of the piece of either the business process or the technology implementation or the program design. I think all those people need to be workshopping some of this stuff, because I think the way that traditional design has happened, and especially when we use folks on the external side of things to design and build things, is we can lose a little bit of those real-time design inputs that are going to be essential for a high-quality outcome. So, you know, I think as long as those things are kind of built into the process of planning and development, and we don't just solely rely on the traditional ways of bringing that information to light, I think it's going to be, you know, the difference.
So the only thing I would add to, add to that, or at least confirm to that, is find the leaders within the system on the colleges. Not every IT department on a community college is in that mode. And so finding the right voices from the right colleges who are really understand and know where we need, where we are and where we need to go is going to be critically important in the design.
And member, thank you. Points well taken. And I think, just like Ajita said, we need some more opportunities of engaging with the team on CCC Apply. There's, the technology landscape is evolving so fast, and there are so many more opportunities to do this much easier than perhaps what was possible only two years ago. And so we need to be able to explore that, and, because we're seeing the problems firsthand that the students experience with this, so there's an opportunity to engage, and I think that's the key here.
Trustee De La Fuente.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for the presentation. Just wanted to see, you know, the people that do their first, like, class, how many people, what's the completion rate? And typically, do they finish it based on the deadlines? Do they finish ahead? You know, do they lag? And then the other question I have is, is group work incorporated into the classes? I take, I did a lot of, like, these online classes, and, you know, sometimes they do the group project, and they meet, and they have the Zoom, so I'm just wondering if that's being incorporated into the curriculum? Because I found that even though you're virtual, you can still have that connection, and you can have that peer support. When you build that connection, then you have better retention and, and, you know, more longevity.
Yeah, absolutely. I can start to answer some of those, and then also we'll invite Don in. From a completion perspective, we are working very diligently to improve our completion, and I do think there are multiple factors. We do have adult learners, there can have very, several competing priorities. We are also currently a free college, and so we have a lot of learners that want to get started, but perhaps aren't understanding the level of dedication required to complete the program. And so I think some of the upfront onboarding and information that we'll be providing will help in those completion rates. We do try to do a lot of nudging support for students as they get started, and then we are following them as they go through their first program. Some of the other things that we're doing is looking at data. We're able to identify where students are getting stuck, and it could be content-specific. And so then we are able to build some tutoring services, as well as add additional resources. The instructors are holding workshops, group kind of opportunities for studying to help students move faster through those areas. And so we've been able to, just throughout several of our programs, we have cross-functional groups that are looking at that data and then building to it. As far as group assignments, what we do integrate across all of our programs are called milestones or discussion point opportunities. And so that is, again, opportunity for application, you get peer feedback, you also get instructor feedback. And so those are kind of the level of engagements. And some of the work-based projects that you also saw through RipeN can be group work and/or could be singular work. And it really depends on the student, it depends on the level of hours that they have available, their level of time, and how they would like to participate. So we do try to adjust based on the student need. But we also do hold some learning communities, we're building some cohorts for students as well, so that we are bringing together students that start kind of simultaneously or in general opportunities or have similar interests. And so trying to create that level of belonging and community building within the program, but then even outside of the program in some of the scaffolding.
Thank you for sharing.
Sure.
Trustee Villa Vicencio.
Before I get the air from President Aguinaldo, I'll make it real brief. I think there's best prac, CalBright is like the innovation hub. To trustee Haynes's point, and the way President met on, you mentioned this too, when you're talking about brainstorming, I'd really encourage you to share your best practices with the system. Our system has so much talent, but we still work in silos. And so there's really opportunities, coming from an institution myself, there's a lot of the best practices that you can definitely share. I understand how technology moves so quickly, but I think there's ways for you to, to bring together perhaps a webinar, to share out what those, what those best practices work for your students, because we also serve those students. So thank you.
Great. I think everyone has talked, or almost everyone, so we'll go to public comment.
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much, presenters. Item 5.2 is reports on contracts and purchases, and I'll pass that one off to Controller Executive Director of Finance, Amber Borth.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board President Aguinaldo and Vice President Rawlings and Board of Trustees. I'm here to provide the standard report of the prior month's contract and purchase activity. Our attachments to the agenda include contracts report with 11 contracts executed last month, and the purchase report has a total of approximately $433,000 spent last month, broken down by expense category.
Thank you very much. Any trustee questions? Any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Amber. The next section of our agenda is constituency group reports. I understand that the first one is CalBright Academic Senate Report from President Stewart, but he's ceding the floor to us because we are grossly over time. Michael, was there anything you wanted to highlight, or are you okay with being pushed?
Good morning, or afternoon now. No, I'm totally fine. We're okay.
Thank you very much. We're trying to get folks off to a flight reservation, so thank you very much for, for accommodating that. We have no report from the Faculty Association, we have no report from the California School Employees Association, and no report from the Associated Students of CalBright College. So we'll take a public forum next. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
There is no public comment, President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. Thus, the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete, and we can adjourn. It is 12:18. Thank you for your participation.